Devanake magimai Devathithake magimai Devanake magimai Devathithake magimai Kedivandhu neethavare Dinamumakkake magimai Enne kedivandhu neethavare Dinamumakkake magimai Ayavaaalge Vaalge Unnaamam vaalge Ayavaaalge Vaalge Unnaamam vaalge Unnadathil devanukke Magimai unthagachum Unnadathil devanuke Magimai unthagachum Bohmili le samadhananum Sridiyam unthagachum Indha bohmiili le samadhananum Sridiyam unthagachum Ayavaaalge Vaalge Unnaamam vaalge Ayavaaalge Vaalge Unnaamam vaalge Devanake magimai Devathithake magimai Kedivandhu neethavare Dinamumakkake magimai Sevigale nee tirandu vittie Seivookum sittham Sevigale nee tirandu vittie Seivookum sittham Puvidanile unviruppam Thooranam agachumee Indha puvidanile unviruppam Thooranam agachumee Ayavaaalge Vaalge Unnaamam vaalge Ayavaaalge Vaalge Unnaamam vaalge Devanake magimai Devathithake magimai Kedivandhu neethavare Dinamumakkake magimai Yeli mayana jengalayee Jengrum ninai pavarae Yeli mayana jengalayee Jengrum ninai pavarae Olimayame thunayalarae Ullathin arudale Jengal olimayame thunayalarae Ullathin arudale Ayavaaalge Vaalge Unnaamam vaalge Ayavaaalge Vaalge Unnaamam vaalge Devanake magimai Devathithake magimai Kedivandhu neethavare Dinamumakkake magimai Teedugira anayvarume Magundu kaligurachum Teedugira anayvarume Magundu kaligurachum Paadungira nayavarume Marisuttham agachumee Indhu paaduriira nayavarume Marisuttham agachumee Ayavaaalge Vaalge Unnaamam vaalge Ayavaaalge Vaalge Unnaamam vaalge Devanake magimai Devathithake magimai Kedivandhu neethavare Dinamumakkake magimai Ayavaaalge Vaalge Unnaamam vaalge Ayavaaalge Vaalge Unnaamam vaalge
Enakumavitta yaaru illapa Unganbavitta eduvoh illapa Enakumavitta yaaru illapa Unganbavitta eduvoh illapa Yaasa ninga pa Ya teva ninga pa Ya sondho ninga pa Ya sodho ninga pa Ya naasa ninga pa Ya teva ninga pa Ya sondho ninga pa Ya sodho ninga pa Kaangindra ellam ornal karaindhu pogume Todugindra ellam ornal tolaindhu pogume Kaangindra ellam ornal karaindhu pogume Todugindra ellam ornal tolaindhu pogume Ya naasa ininga pa Ya teva ininga pa Ya sondho ininga pa Ya sodho ininga pa Ya naasa ininga pa Ya teva ininga pa Ya sondho ininga pa Ya sodho ininga pa Enakumavitta yaaru illapa Unganbavitta eduvoh illapa Enakumavitta yaaru illapa Unganbavitta eduvoh illapa Yaasa ininga pa Ya teva ininga pa Ya sondho ininga pa Ya sodho ininga pa Yaasa ininga pa Ya teva ininga pa Ya sondho ininga pa Ya sodho ininga pa Ulagathin selvam ellam nilayainikkumo Alyada selvam nire podum yesuve Ulagathin selvam ellam nilayainikkumo Alyada selvam nire podum yesuve Ya naasa ininga pa Ya teva ininga pa Ya sondho ininga pa Ya sodho ininga pa Ya naasa ininga pa Ya teva ininga pa Ya sondho ininga pa Ya sodho ininga pa Enakumavitta yaaru illapa Unganbavitta eduvoh illapa Enakumavitta yaaru illapa Unganbavitta eduvoh illapa Yaasa ininga pa Ya teva ininga pa Ya sondho ininga pa Ya sodho ininga pa Ya naasa ininga pa Ya teva ininga pa Ya sondho ininga pa Ya sodho ininga pa
Praise Lord, people of God! Greetings to you in the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ! Deva Janame, andavara Yesu Kristu naamathile ungalke vaalthudalai nan thiruvithu koligiren. Kartar nallabar, our devotion is essential for us. In these circumstances, our nature remains unchanged. This God, our Father, Son and Holy Spirit, has always been with us in this world. We must not hesitate, we must strive, we will always be faithful. Let's put our hope in God, that God who said that "I will never leave you nor forsake you" is always with us to lead us and guide us in the most difficult times of our lives that we find ourselves in. During this lockdown time, during this time of pandemic, it has taught us a lot of things. Many things have been taught us. One of them is the importance of family and the importance of the community, the importance of society. The importance of family, the importance of community, the importance of society has been taught us. I want to thank God for enabling me to come into your homes with the message of the Lord Jesus Christ. Andavara Yesu Kristu, for the sake of my life, I would like to thank you. This evening, I want to share on the community of God, the family of God. The family of God, the family of God, the family of God. And I believe that the Holy Spirit will minister to us. If we are devout, we will pray for His mercy and speak for His word. The community of God, the family of God, the family of God. When we see the creation, God created us in His own image and in His likeness. He created individuals to be part of a family. He created individuals to be part of a community. Humanity is a relational being. Humanity wants to live in a society, in a family, in a community. Humanity was not created to live in isolation, but humanity was created to live and thrive within the family and in the community. Humanity does not want to live independently, no one says. If we want to live independently, no one says. But we want to live and be healthy in a society, in a family. We are created in the image of God to reflect the likeness of God. God has made us to reflect our faults, to do good deeds. What does this mean? What does we mean when we say we were created to reflect the image and the likeness of God? Number one, we need to understand, God himself is a family. We must understand that. God is a family. In the family of God, the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit, there is perfect love, perfect harmony, perfect fellowship and perfect unity. In the Father, Son and Holy Spirit, there is perfect love, perfect harmony, perfect fellowship and perfect unity. Therefore, God is a family and He established our family so that we will be a blessing in the community on the earth to have fellowship and intimacy with God. We must understand that. God is a family. God is a family. We want to live in a family, in a society. Why? Because God is here to live in a family. We want to be in a good relationship. That is why we want to live in a family, in a society. Okay, the community of God, I want to go back to our history. When we see the history, we see how it happened. We see the story of Abraham. You see in Genesis chapter 12, God calls Abraham and He says, "I will make a great nation out of you." We know that we will make a great nation out of you. And we see the descendants of Abraham. Joseph, who goes to Egypt. Joseph goes to Egypt. How did his family and his brothers survive there? The family of Joseph, after a while, the other brothers of Joseph also comes and join. So the people of God have grown in numerous number and they fill the place then. We see that many people live there. The Egyptian king became so nervous because of this and he increased their labor and held them in slavery. The king of Egypt, seeing the people of God, seeing the people of Abraham, fearing to kill them. This is where God raises Moses and Aaron and sends them to deliver the people of Israel from the slavery, from the leadership of King Pharaoh. Pharaoh wanted to kill the people of God. And we see Moses and Aaron. Exodus chapter 5, verse 22. "Yatharakum 5 madigaram, 22 masnuk yuvanama koorigirathu." Now Moses returns to the Lord and said, "Why Lord, have you brought trouble on these people? Is this why you sent me? Pharaoh has not rescued your people at all." Moses went to God, and he said, "For this, you have cursed me." Pharaoh is not even relenting, he is not letting our people go. In chapter 6, verse 1, the Lord said to Moses, "Now you will see what I will do to Pharaoh. Because of my mighty hand, he will let them go." Moses gave him a gift of prayer. In verse 2, chapter 6, verse 2, it says, "God said to Moses, 'I am the Lord. I appeared to Abraham, Isaac and Jacob as God Almighty. But by my name, the Lord, I did not make myself known to them. I also established my covenant with them to give them the land of Canaan.'" And he said, "I came to Pharaoh, to Isaac, to Jacob, to God, to God. But I did not give my name, my own name, to them. But I did not give you my name, to them. I also established my covenant with them to give them the land of Canaan. I will give Canaan the land of Canaan. I have remembered my covenant." The God who appeared to Abraham is an almighty God, a God who is capable of doing what He promised. And he said, "He has given us the land of Canaan." "I am a gracious God and I will deliver." "I will also establish my covenant." "I am a gracious God and I will deliver." So God is remembering His covenant and His commitment. And he says, "I have remembered my covenant and His commitment that He said He will do to Abraham." God is presenting His program. On the ground, God has given his message to Pharaoh, to Pharaoh. The covenant that He made to Abraham and the commitment that He gave to Abraham saying, "I will do." This is what on which God is laying His program. "Yatharakum 6 madigaram, 8 masnuk yuvanama koorigirathu." Exodus chapter 6, verse 8, it says, "I am the Lord and I will bring you out from the yoke of slavery. I will free you, I will redeem you. After delivering you, I will take you as my people." "I will take you as my people." "I will take you as my people." See, deliverance is that work of resolving from evil which God brings about through His intervention. God has done it to remove the wrong people. After deliverance, God takes them as His own people. To remove the wrong people, to remove the wrong people, God has done it. So a community is formed, that is called the community of God. We have done it to remove the wrong people. And it is to this community that God makes a covenant. We have done it to remove the wrong people. That is why God has done it. "I will deliver you and you will be my people and I will be your God." "I will be your God." And there are a lot of privileges and responsibilities because you are my covenant people. You are my people. A lot of responsibility and privileges because you are my covenant people. The fullness of God, see, the fullness of the revelation of God comes to the covenant community. God has done it to remove the wrong people. So the covenant formula encompasses a people and not an individual. We see that we are not only removing the wrong people. Your welfare is dependent on the community. And the key word that describes solidarity is the people concept. It is not an individual concept. We see that we are not only removing the wrong people. Individual rights and responsibilities were related in the community. We see that we are not only removing the wrong people. Not only that. God himself took leadership of this community. After the salvation, God gave him the covenant. He expects a certain kind of lifestyle that is acceptable to him and therefore gave them the law. We must understand that. God has removed the wrong people. He has removed the wrong people. He has done it to remove the wrong people. He has done it to remove the wrong people. He has done it to remove the wrong people. To the one who is formed, to the one to whom He has made a covenant, God is giving a law. God is giving the law. The commandments are demanding for a righteous living. Why? Because God has given us the right. We want to live a good life. The commandments are demanding a rightful living. He redeems them, He makes them into a covenant community and He calls them to a righteous living. I am going to repeat that. He has removed the wrong people. He has done it to remove the wrong people. He has done it to remove the wrong people. Why? Because God is demanding a righteous living. Why? Because God is demanding a righteous living. Because God wants to give the wrong people a good relationship. If the wrong people are good, God cannot give them a good relationship. That is why he has given us the right. God wants to give the wrong people a good relationship. These people had a spiritual bond, a friendship, a relationship. This is not a bloodline. See, a community was formed. There was no difference at all. Everyone were equal. It was not a bloodline, but each of one were committed to the group structure. And in this group structure, worship of the same God determine the group membership. I like this. Only one God is worthy of membership. If you want to become a member of the community, you should worship the true and the living God. If you want to become a member of the community, you should worship the true and the living God. Therefore, it is not a bloodline. It is not a bloodline. So it is redemption, righteousness and worship. We see that God redeemed and God formed a covenant community. In imposing a righteous living, He wanted to have a relationship with them. And in instituting worship, He wanted that relationship to sustain and to grow. I will repeat that. He wants to give the wrong people a good relationship. In doing that, he can have a relationship with them. When we hear the right, we want to give God a good relationship. Why? Because God wants to give you a good relationship. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. This is what happened in the Old Testament. I'll repeat again. God saved them. He formed them a community. He made a covenant. He instituted righteousness by giving them the ten commandments. And he also instituted worship. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. As I said earlier, God himself is a family. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. There was perfect love, perfect harmony, perfect fellowship and unity and community in the Trinity. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. The Trinity is co-equal, co-eternal and co-existent. And God had wired us or transformed some of these qualities. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. The church is one body. We are having the same head which is God. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. See, there is equality because we are all in the image of God. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. In society, they may be the rich, the poor, the learned and the unlearned, the high and the low. But in the kingdom of God, Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. And the blood of Jesus is efficient and sufficient for all of us. The same spirit, Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. So because of this, there is equality amongst us. The community is not a bloodline for us to boast about it. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. It's not a bloodline, but it's a faith line. And Christ is the unifying factor. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Therefore, there is equality or there can be equality. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. There is also a possibility of a peaceful coexistence. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. There is also a possibility of a peaceful coexistence. I want to say this. Man is not at peace with others because he is not at peace with himself. He is not at peace with himself because he is not at peace with God. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. And it's good for us to get peace at God first, then we will have peace and then we can have peace with others. Because I am wired like this and created and designed for a community. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. My inner man and everything of me longs for a meaningful relationship with other humans. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. God has given us the desire to long for a meaningful relationship with other people who are around us. We long to know them and we long to let us know also. We want to love them, we want people to love us also. We want to accept them and we want people to accept them. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. All of us who are born in this world, we long for these three things. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Even if you are a small kid, we long for affection, for attention and for appreciation. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Even a little baby, the baby will always do something to get the attention of the older people. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Because even a baby wants attention, affection and appreciation. That is how we are created. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. And we also find our self-worth and our identity and the uniqueness within the community. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. At times, we are deeply wounded within our own community. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. We need to be of one-minded that we are a fallen community. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Because we are a fallen community, we need the redemption of God every time and therefore we need to bear with one another. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. So God has created this community. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. And in this community, what is the benefits? Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. What are the first thing? The first thing is community is designed, is God's design for growth. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Our Christian life was never meant to be unisolated by. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. How good and joyful it is for us to dwell in unity. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. So the community of God in general and in particular is a great gift from God. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Because of the community, we have been blessed so much. The community is like an extended family. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. So in that church, there's a lot of sharing, there's a lot of caring, there's a lot of common things because of Christ as the essence. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. It's not mere fellowship or social contact, it's a spiritual bond. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. This is a spiritual bond. And the criteria that all of us should commit oneself are that we are called to love one another. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. We need to forgive one another. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Honor one another. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Generously generosity in hospitality. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. We need to submit to one another out of reverence for Christ. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. A few instructions to remind us and help us understand that growth is in Christ. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Romans chapter 12, verse nine. This is what God expects us to do and I will follow. If you have your bibles, kindly turn it. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Verse nine says, love must be sincere, hate what is evil and hold on to what is good. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Be devoted to one another in love. Honor one another above yourself. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. You need to honor one another above yourself. Verse 11 says, never be lacking in zeal, keep up the spiritual fervor, always serving the Lord. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. These are the things that God expects. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Be joyful in hope, patient in suffering and faithful in prayer. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. 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 A situation had a beginning, it will also have an end. Therefore, let us be patient in suffering. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. God is concerned about everything that is concerning us church. Therefore, do not be worried, do not look at the situation and be feared. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Share with the Lord's people who are in need, practice hospitality. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Bless those who persecute you, rejoice with those who rejoice and mourn with those who mourn. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Live in harmony with one another. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Do not be proud, but be willing to associate people who are of low position. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. The next verse says, do not think you are superior, do not repay evil for evil. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Be careful to do what is right in the eyes of everyone. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. And I like the next verse. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. As far as it depends on you, live at peace with everyone. As far as it depends on you, live at peace with everyone. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. It says, do not take revenge. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. If your enemy is hungry, feed him. If they are thirsty, give them a drink. And finally, in verse 12 says, do not be overcome by evil, but overcome evil by doing good. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. It says, do not be overcome by evil, but overcome evil by good. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. I know these are the difficult ones for us to continuously follow. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. But these are the principles. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Our lives are sacred and it demands for the sacredness to be upheld. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Your bodies are my temple of the Holy Spirit. So we are created in secrets. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. We are called to attain the fullness of Christ. So this community is a design for growth. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Our primary calling is to become like Christ. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. So number one, I said, it is God's design for growth. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. What is the second thing? It is also the family of faith. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. It is a place where we will know more of God and experience his power. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. We will see the worth of God and we will also experience God. Moses says to Moses, I am the Lord. தேவனுடைய தேவீகத் தன்மையும், தேவனுடைய வள்ளமையும் அந்த எடத்தில் நாம் ருசி பார்க்கும் முடியும். The quality is work of God can be seen in abundance in the community. சமாதாயத்திலேதான் தேவனுடைய பயங்கிரமான அற்புதங்கள், தேவனுடைய பயங்கிரமான வள்ளமைகள், அதிசெய்ங்களை நாம் ஏராலமாய் சமாதாயத்திலேதான் நாம் காண முடியும். I may not experience a lot of miracles in my life. என்னுடைய தனிப்பட்ட வாள்க்கைலே, இலாவிட்டால் என்னுடைய குடும்மா வாள்க்கைலே ஒரு வேலை அவ்வெ போது, ஒரு வேலை அனுதிநுமும், அற்புதங்களை நாம் பார்க்க முடியாத ஒரு வாள்க்கையா இருக்கலாம். But in the community, we will be able to see a lot of miracles. சமாதாயத்திலே, சபையிலே அனைக அற்புதங்களை நாம் கேல்வி பட்டுக்கொண்டு நம்முடைய விஸ்வாசத்தை வளர்த்துக்கொண்டு முடியும். உராமேன் சொல்வமா? நான் சொல்லுகிறது இத்தான். ஒரு வேலை என்னுடைய வாள்க்கைலே நான் அற்புதம் பாக்காமைத்தலாம். குடும்மத்தின் வாள்க்கைலே சில நாட்கள் வரச்சி நாட்கள் முலுமாய் போகும்போது ஒன்மே நன்மையே பார்காத நாட்கள் வருகிறது. அந்த நேரத்தில் நாம் சோர்ந்து போய், தலந்து போகக்கூடாது. சமாதாயத்தைப் பார்க்கவேணும். சபையைப் பார்த்து, தேவன், சபையின் மக்கள், பிரருடை வாள்க்கையைச் செய்கிற நன்மைகளைக் குறித்து நாம் பார்த்து, தேவனுடைய மகத்துவத்தை அவர்களுடைய வாள்க்கைலே பார்க்கும்போது நம்முடைய விஸ்வாசம் அட்டோமேட்டிகாய் வளர்ச்சி அடையும். When we see the goodness of God in other people, even if we are not facing it, faith will increase in our life. That is why it is the community of faith. So that we will trust and depend on God. Most of the time, we tend to limit our faith in God based on our experience. பார்ங்கள், அனைக நேரத்தில் தேவன் பேர் இருக்கிற என்னுடைய விஸ்வாசத்தை என்னுடைய அனுபவத்தின் பிரகாரமாய் நாம் குறித்து போடுகிற அனுபவத்திலே இருக்கோம். Many times, I limit my faith on God based on my experience of God. தேவனுக்கு எனக்கும் இருக்கிற அனுபவத்தை வைத்து, என்னுடைய விஸ்வாசத்தை நான் மதிப்பிடுகிறேன். நல்ல அனுபவம் இருந்தால், நல்ல விஸ்வாசம். ஒரு வேலை நல்ல அனுபவம் இல்லாவிட்டாலும், ஒரு வரச்சியான காலத்திலே நான் போய்க்கொண்டு இருந்தால் விஸ்வாசம் அப்படையும் மங்கி போய்கிறது. ஆகியால் தான் சபை முக்கியமாயிருக்கிறது. That is why the church plays a major role. என்னுடைய மர்ப்பிடமாக சொல்றேன். என்னுடைய வாள்க்கைல் அதிசெய் அற்புதம் ஒரு நாளும் பார்காவிட்டாலும், நான் விஸ்வாசத்திலே தலந்து போகுடாது. பிரருடை வாள்க்கை, சபையின் அங்கத்தினர். விஸ்வாசிகரின் வாள்க்கை பார்க்கும்போது, அவர்களுடைய வாள்க்கைல் தேவன் நன்மையைச் செய்துகொண்டு இருக்கறார். அவர்க்கு கிடைத்த அதே இரக்கம், அதே கிருபை எனக்கும் கிடைக்கும். எனக்கும் தேவனுடைய கிருபை போதுமானதாயிருக்கிறது என்று. சபையுடைய ஜனங்களின் நன்மையைப் பார்க்கும்போது என்னுடைய விஸ்வாசம் வளரும். So second thing is, it is also the community of faith. மொன்றாது, it is a place where we can see Christ in people. இதை இப்பேர்பட்ட சமாதாயம் என்றால், கிருஷ்டுவைப் பார்க்குகுடிய இந்த ஜனங்களுடைய வாள்க்கைலே, கிருஷ்டுவை நான் பார்க்குகுடிய ஒரு எடமாய் இருக்கிறது. அவர்களுடைய நன்மைகளைப் பார்த்து, கிருஷ்டுடைய ஸ்வபாவத்தை ஜனங்களுடைய வாள்க்கையிலே பார்த்து ஆவியின் கணியை ஜனங்களுடைய வாள்க்கையைப் பார்த்து, நாம் ஆண்டவர்க்குள் மனமகல்ச்சியாய் இருக்க முடியும். உராமேன் சொல்வமா? When we see the fruit of the spirit in people's life, we can rejoice in God. We can celebrate in God. We can be happy in God. ஆவியின் கணியை நாம் விஸ்வாசிகருடைய வாள்க்கைலே பார்க்கும்போது, கத்தர்க்குள் நாம் மனமகல்ச்சியாய் இருக்கமுடியும். The continued presence and the power and the glory of God is continuously experienced. பார்ங்கள், நம்முடைய வாள்க்கைல் விஸ்வாசத்திலே தலர்ச்சி இருந்தாலும், ஒரு வரண்டுபோன ஒரு நேரம் இருந்தாலும் பிரருடை வாள்க்கை பார்க்கும்போது, வள்ளமை பார்க்கும்போது, பிரசனத்தைப் பார்க்கும்போது, அதிசெய்ங்களைப் பார்க்கும்போது மகிமையைப் பார்க்கும்போது என்னுடைய விஸ்வாசம் தொடந்து வந்துகொண்டு தான் இருக்கோம். இன்னொரு மிகப் பெரிய அற்புதமான காரிமை என்னவென்றால், ஜபத்தின் சபோர்ட் of prayer from the believers. இது நமக்கு ஒரு பெரிய இன்கரேஜ்மெண்டாயிருக்கும். ஒருவரை ஒருவர் கட்டவேணும். When we build one another, when we encourage one another, when we bless one another, when we pray for one another, when we help one another, we are able to see Christ in people. வெறிய தேவனை அரியாத ஜனங்களிடத்தில், தேவனுடைய குணாந்தி செய்தே நாம் எதிர்பார்க்கவே முடியாது. We cannot expect the quality, the nature of God from people who don't know God. தேவத்தைப் பற்றி கடுகலவும், ஜ்ஞானமில்லாத, சம்பந்தமில்லாத ஜனங்கள் மத்திலே தேவனுடைய குணாந்தி செய்தே நாம் ஒருபோதும் எதிர்பார்க்கமுடியாது. நாம் தேவனுடைய குணாந்தி செய்தே யாருடைத்துல் பார்க்கும் முடியும்? கிருஷ்டுவை யாருக்குல் பார்க்கும் முடியும்? கிருஷ்டுவை அறிந்த ஜனங்களிடத்தில்தான் நாம் பார்க்கும் முடியும். There are a lot of privileges and responsibilities for every individual in the community. நான் ஏற்றனவை சொன்ன, இந்த சமாதாயத்திலே ஒவ்வொரு தனிப்பட்ட நபருக்கும் அனைக பொருப்புகள், அனைக சலுகைகள் இருக்கிறது. We need to commit to our responsibility. எனக்கென்று தேவன் அனைக பொருப்புகளை வைத்திருக்கிறார். நான் சபையிலத்திலிருந்து பெற்றுக்கொள்வது மட்டுமல்ல. சபைக்கை நான் எனக்குடுக்கவேண்டும். I shouldn't be only expecting what the church goes. சபையென்ன கொடுக்கோம்? பாஸ்டர் என்ன கொடுப்பாரு? எங்களிடம் வந்து விசாரிப்பானா, எனக்காக ஜபிப்பானா, அது மட்டும் நான் எதிர்பார்த்துக்கொண்டு இருக்கறார். நான் சபைக்காக ஜபிக்கலாமா? நான் பாஸ்டர் காக ஜபிக்கலாமா? நான் சபைக்கெதான் நன்மை செய்லாமா? What I receive is my privilege but what I give is my responsibility. So naan virum salugai mattamey anubavikke kooda, ennu porupai naan sayavendam. What are the things that we go through? We go through a lot of conflicts. Sabayle jananangal irundhal, prachengalirukkum, adhi yelvathan. Adhi kristuvay arindavargala irundhalum, ariyavittalam. Ellorukum unarchigal irukkardhu, ellorukum themigal irukkardhu. Ellorum inum maamsathil than irukkrom. Anega kasappu thanmay, vittukodukratanmay iramalirukkam. This should be all, lot of misunderstanding, lot of bitterness, strife, quarrel, argument. Idhelam irukkum, yarume paripurnara inum maara vellai. None of us are perfect. We are still in the body, we still have emotions, we still have to fight with our inner being. Naam suyathodukooda, orunnaalum naam poradikondu than irukkavendam. Aagyal in the sarirathle irukkara namakke, anega vidamana shodunegal irukkum, anega vidamana yuddham irukkum, anega vidamana khulapangal irukkum. Sila nerathil naan en vittukoduka veyndam, envedidhu entha thavaram illa entra nyayapaduthavum mudiyum. Sometimes we may be perfect. Sometimes we may be right. But for me in the community, samadhayathle irukkaran naan, devanudiya rajyathle irukkaran naan. It is not important whether I am right over that secondary. But am I kind? Naan nidhanamay irukkaran naan, purumiyay irukkaran, am I kind to people? It's not just being right because the kingdom demands my kindness. Janangal, namasutthi irukkarajananangal, eyarknavay adipatti, kayappatti irukkarargal. Naan sariyay irukkaranan entra adhi oru poruttalal, naan avargalakkhu menmayay irukkaran, thalmiyay irukkaran. Am I being kind? Am I courteous to them is what is very important. So though we don't isolate ourselves and break ourselves. Naam, kastham varigirathu, kasappu varigirathu, misunderstanding varigirathu, kovum varigirathu. Enakkum avargalokothupogarathu, aagyal naan avargalai vittu, vitti naan veliyavandhavay entra orunnaalum naam solave mudiyadhu. Because as I said in the beginning, aramathlin sunna, we are created to be in the community. Naan sabayle irukkavendam, samadhayathle irukkavendam, kudumathle naan irukkavendam entra than devan enne uruvaaki, podumana thanmegalai naan koduthirukkara. Sila nerathil naam than vittukoduka veyndam. Naan sariyay irundhalum paravay illai. Adhi piraruke kayamay irundhal, vittukodukarathu adhi devanadi swabavum, adhi nam sayimodhi, karttar namakke nichyamaga odhivish sevar. So, there may be problems in the family. There may be misunderstanding in the church. There may be misunderstanding in the community. Oru udharanam solvaran. Veelaseere edhathle, anega sandegal, sachrugal irukkardhu. There are a lot of misunderstanding. Ana boss enna thittunallu, nam veelya thik pottu varatheli. We don't throw our work and come, there is a lot of problems. Kannapinnan thittukaravu. Boss will shout at us, he will embarrass us in front of everyone. Ellorum munadi bayangraman thittuvango. Adhalam vaangi kunnu, adhalam sagittukondu, veelamattai enna vittu, poivave kooda. Entra veelamela irukkarandha patru, jananamela illa, kudumathlin mel illa, sabayin mel illa. We have so much of problems at work but we don't throw work and just come out. When we get angry. Kovum varamadha, veelya thik pottu naan varathu. Enna than kovum vandhanu, veelya matta appudey gittiyapudichin ukaramay. Why not we practice the same thing when it comes to family? Why not we try the same thing when it comes to church? Ama sabayle vityasangal irukkum, porathangal irukkum, argument varo. Sila karithre naam othupogamattum, ana sabay vittu veliyapogarathu thirvala, kudumaththi vittu veliyapogarathu thirmalak. Vitti veliyapogarathu thirvala, samadhayathle naam onraais serundhu naam irukkavendam entra than devan namay vaythirukkara. Munr karangalai sunna samadhayathle. Samadhay, the community is built for our growth. It was designed for our growth. Sabay naam valarchi adaya veyndam entra devanal uruvaakkappattu than oru. The second thing I said, it is the community of faith where I will build my faith. Viswasthithin kuduma, viswasthithin samadhayam entra naan sunna. Enudhey viswasthithin walkai, samadhayathle than vaala veyndam, samadhayathle than valarchi adaya veyndam. I need to grow, I need to give fruit and I need to mature in the community of faith. And the third thing I said, the community is the place where Christ is seen in people. In the samadhayathle than kristuvay naam jananangaludi valkile parkamudiyum. As I said earlier, it is not mere fellowship. Naam oru aikyathuk mattume alaikke padavilai. We are not being called only for fellowship. We are not being called only for social contact but we have been called for spiritual bond. Naam virum aikyathuk mattum alaikke padavilai, virum oru samoga nanmay kaagum mattume alaikke padavilai. Ana oru aavikuyay bandathuk entra naam alaikke padurukrom. It is not bloodline but it is faith line. Idhu rattha sambhandamana oru alla, idhu viswasthatthai sambandpaduthigira oruay irukkardhu. Aindha karangalai naan ungodukooda pagindukondin. Oru redeemed community, righteous community, relational community, a worshiping community and a serving community. Indha aindha karangalai naam paattam. Meetadukappatta oru samadhayam, parisuttamana irukkavendiyavur samadhayam. Uravila irukkavendiyavur samadhayam, aaradikkira oru samadhayam, seva sayigira oru samadhayam. A redeemed community should become a covenant community. That is a church. Meetadukappatta oru samadhayam, oru udan padikkein samadhayamay maara veyndam. And a covenant community should become a righteous one for our relationship with God. Meetadukappatta samadhayam, oru udan padikkekkul varavendam. Udan padikkekkul vandhi, oru parisuttathkenthu varavendam. Andu parisuttathle than devanodukooda oru nalla uravay naam vaythukolla mudiyum. Then that relationship has to be sustained and become intimate in our worship. Parangal nam parisuttathke yedavay vaandukondi irukkum bodhi, namudiya aaradanay mulamay. Devanay un devanagi, karttaray mulu irudaythodu, mulu aththumavodu, mulu manathodu, ni aaradikkavendam entra than karttar edarparkara. Indha aaradanayin devanodukooda oru nalla aikyathil varakudiyavay naam vekkamudiyam. Namudiya aaradanay, nyayatikalamay naam aaradhanike poey, paadalai padugarathu mattum illa. Our worship is not limited to Sunday. I want us to understand this. We don't go to a sanctuary but we take our sanctuaries and we go to a place. Nandragavaningal, devan sunnah, ningale devanudiya aalyam entra. So ningalum naanum devanudiya aalyamay irukkrom. Aagyal naam aalyathukapogarathulai, namudiya aalyaththai kundupoy, oru serundhu varigira edathle naam sangamikiram. We come and we converse into a place that is the larger church. So worship should be a lifestyle. Aaradanay, nyayatikalamay mattum vandhi andhodramani neeram paadalai paadi, jebithu, thudithu, vedaththi vasithu, anurudhi vasanaththi kettupogarathu mattum aaradanay illa. Naam devanudiya aalyamay irukkardhanale, namudiya walkay murayay oru aaradanay than irukkardhu. Murameen solvam. Because I am the temple of the Holy Spirit and God resides in me. My lifestyle itself is worship. Aagyal aaradanay, tingakalamay, sanikalamay ennalanaan nadukkardho, adhu than aaradanay. From Monday to Saturday, whatever happens, that is worship. So my worship and my serving goes hand in hand. Aagyal enudhey aaradanayum, enudhey sevaayum onraidhan pogirathu. Siller aaradhanayil valunaray irupargal, seva sayigarathle kurandhavarlay irupargal. Some are good in worshiping but very bad in serving. But God is calling us to a community. Naan samadhayathin oru angathinaray irukkardhanale, sabayin oru angathinaray irukkara. Adhalai, endhalukka devanay naam aaradikkromu, avidamay devanudiya pairle naam piraruke seva sayyadan karttar namay alaythirukkara. Adhu than namudiya porupai irukkardhu. Again, worship is my privilege, serving is my responsibility. Aaradikkirathu enudhey slakkyam, seva sayigarathu enudhey porupenthu nam eduthukollamudiyum. Therefore, I want to encourage all of us as I bring to close in the seedyae mudikkira in the velayal. Let us encourage one another. Let us bless one another. Let us serve one another out of reverence for Christ in my life and relationship. If my life and relationship is only vertical and it's not horizontal, it's of no use. Enudhey walkai, virum enakkum devanakkum mattume ividamana oru nerathil, oru directionla poittunaka, adhu nalathu than, ana adhumattundhan devan edarparkarathu. Endhalukka devanakkum, enakkum, walkayudiyad graph, yudlo dhurum potho, enakkum jananangalakkum, adhi preepogavendam. So my vertical life should also be my horizontal one. Otherwise, there is no use at all. My communion and worship should be backed by service. Enudhey aikyamum, enudhey aaradanayum, enudhey seva sayigira andhakaryathin naledhan, adhu onra inake padavendam. I'll repeat again. My communion and my worship should be backed with my service. Therefore, be a helping hand to your people. Ulkudiya samadhayathle, ulkudiya kudumathle, ulkudiya sabayle, themayodukooda irukkarajananangalukke, naam odhavum karathai naam needum. Let our life be a light. Andhavarakayeshu Kristus sunnah, ningale bhoomiki uppaavum velichamay irukkare. Let your light so shine before people so that they may see your good deeds and glorify your father in heaven. May our life shine for Jesus Christ. In the nambikkailada ulagathle, in the irul nirenda ulagathle, enudhey walkai oru velichamay irukkutum. Naan Esukristuvade sugandha vasanay, viisugira oru navaraay, naan vaalambadai karttar edarparkara. God wants me to be the light and God wants me to be a hope for people who aren't hopeless. Nambikkayatra sulnalele, irukkarajananangalukke, naan Esukristuvade velichaththai kodupoy, nambikkay taruvayendam entra devan namakke nyabugam motthukar. Tomorrow also, we will be studying about the community of God. Inreke, sila karangalai, devanudiya sabay, devanudiya samadhayam yeppeyirukkavendam entra naam inreke paattam. I did a teaching on the community of God. Tomorrow also, I will conclude the same series and we will close. Isn't this a privilege church? Sabay namukka ettane ubayogamay irukkardhu, sabayin angathinar ettane ubayogamay irukkarathu. Naam sarirathle sugavinamay irundhal, namay parka, nanbergal varugararallu illio, uravinar varugararallu illio, sabayin makkan nichyamaga varuvar. Oruvelai varamudiyavittalam, tolai pisle alaythu, brother sister ebbeerikringo, ungalkaagana joompanra entra sabaylendhu anega uchaga mana karangal varigirathu. Aagyal devanakkhu naam nandrisaluthuom, in the sabay kaagana nandrisaluthuom, in the kristva samadhayath kaagana naam karttarakkhu nandrisaluthuom. I want to again remind that community is based for our growth. Community is for our faith and the community is for us to see Jesus Christ in people. God bless you. Kangalimodi naam jebikalam. Kangalimoodi jebikum bodhi, namayname devanidhatthil opukodukpom. Andhavare, naan oru sabayin angathinaray irukkavendam. Enudhey walkai, andhavare anegarke proyochanamulla walkaya irukkavendam. Naan oru velichamay irukkavendam. Naan oru nirubamay irukkavendam. I want to be the gospel. I want to not represent Jesus Christ. Naan Esukristuvay pradibalikka, andhavare enudhey walkai opukodukran entra kangalimoodi, ungal walkai opukodukbengala. Kirubai nirendeygal, nalla andhavare, niri ethtanay nallavar. Andhavare nirengalai uruvaaki, umudhey sayalan nirengalai uruvaaki. Andhavare, nangal paavathle irukkum bodhi, nirengalai andhavare meethukondu, andhavare engalodukooda oru udan padikay sayidu. Andhavare, engalai niri sabaykul vaythu, andhre sabayle anega nanmaygal, anega kirubegal, anega nanmayana karangalai, andhavare nirengalukke koduthu. Enudhey walkainir arthamulla, proyochanamulla walkaya mariniire, ungal nandrisaluthukrom. Appa umudhyasittam, enudhey walkile nirevera, andhavare, nangal prayasa padha, nirengal kodhivish sevar. Maanam jebikukrom. Father, we pray, Lord, that you will enable us to fulfill your plans in our life, that the purposes of God will be fulfilled in our life. I pray God that we will not be scared, we will not be feared. Andhavare, nangal bayathle irukkamal, andhavare, tevilada, andhavare, yosnakul, tevilada, kavalekul nangal irukkamal. Devanudiya sittam, enudhey walkile nirevairigira orikum, enudhey walkaye yarume thodu mudiyadhu entra orudiyay nangal irukka kirubaita. Todandu, andhavare oththathai oda, enudhey viswasthatthai nangal kaathukolla, nalla porathathai nangal porada, engalku niri kirubayum, dayavum niri taruvayendam maanam jebikukrom. Themayodukooda irukkarajananangalai, niri themigale sandikavendam maanam jebikukrom. Indha ooradunka kaalathle, andhavare, yaradu veelya elundupoyindhal, andhavare, niraasirvadikavendam maanam jebikukrom. Ella kuraygalai niri nikki, nirevana, nirevana sundosham, nirevana samadhanaathinale, niri taruvayendam maanam jebikukrom. Nirevana varu bodhi, kuraygal maripogam entra nangal parkrom. Nirevana var vandhi, ella kuraygalai niri nikki pottu, arpudathin devan, arpudangalai sevendam maanam jebikukrom. Asirvadinka, belapadinka. Esuvi naamathil jebikukrom, pidavay. Amen, amen. God bless you. It was such a joy to talk to you about the Lord Jesus Christ. Devanudiya seedyae urodukooda pagindukolla, migavum sundoshama irundhu, idhu asirvadamay irundhukkum entra naan molu irudaythodu viswasthitiren. Until we meet next time. God bless you. Shalom.